Yes, Okiki Mara?
Ah? Okay, so on. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, we are going to have a start. So I would like to... You all to bow your heads and close your eyes. Okay. Stand, please, stand, because I know there are many people, they like to... Yeah, okay. Head bow and eyes close, please. Oh heavenly Father and our God, Lord, as we bow into your presence, Lord, give us the full knowledge and understanding, Lord, so that we can be one. Lord, help each and every one of us in this church this afternoon, Lord, to take care of us, Lord, give us travelling mercy, Lord. Take full control over each and every one of us, Lord. And I'm praying especially for the Prime Minister and the Cabinet, which of course they will... God will give them the knowledge and the understanding so that they can govern the nation the way it's supposed to be, in your name I pray, amen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My friends of Mero, London Road, Cuba Road, Castaway Development and other hamlets within the community of Mero. Let me welcome you this evening in a very special way and tell you how pleased I am that you are here and you are here on time. And I believe that, um... Your presence here and you being here on time is an indication of your interest in tonight's meeting and to find out exactly what is it that your parliamentary representative has in store for you and by extension, the government of Dominica. Let me welcome in a very special way Mr Nicholas Chang-Sesprit, a very good friend of mine and colleague. Um, I want to thank you for being here this evening. And I also see in our presence, Mr Vanos John Charles. Thank you for being here this evening. But ladies and gentlemen, as we are well aware, over the last several weeks, the government of Dominica has embarked on a series of town hall meetings targeting various communities across the country. And in fact, for those of you who remember, we actually launched this programme in Mero when we had initially Minister Rosalind Paul and Minister Robert Tong with us here. But at that point in time, it has not been broadcast live. But we actually started the series of town hall meetings in the community of Mero. And tonight's meeting really is for me as a Member of Parliament to report to you back... to report back to you on the number of activities that have taken place since we last met and also to share with you some of the plans and programmes that we have moving forward. But more importantly, it is also to hear from you and to listen to you as we continue to work together towards the development of our community, Mero. And when I say Mero, I refer to all of the other areas, Castaway Development, London Road, Cuba Road, etc. So when I say Mero, I'm not leaving out any of the other hamlets. And I'm very happy this evening as well to see quite a number of you from the other hamlets in Mero on the outskirts of Mero, I must say, here with us this evening. And it shows that you are appreciative of the work that is taking place in the community and you also want to continue to see more happen in the community. So tonight, this town hall meeting really will culminate the series of town halls that have taken place before the presentation of the budget. And the Prime Minister, Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, will on Thursday, the 27th, present the national budget to the country, outlining some of the plans and programmes that the government has in store over the next financial year. And I want to invite all of you to tune in on Thursday to listen to the budget presentation as the Prime Minister will address the nation. And of course, following the budget, the Cabinet of Dominica will again continue on its drive to bring across this message of the Dominican Labour Party and the work and plans that we have for the continued development of our country. And I'm happy to be in Mero this evening for a number of reasons. Because I believe the people of Mero, they possess a lot of talent and opportunity that we can continue to build upon. Mero is also a very scenic community to visit. We have the wonderful beach on the outside. And I believe we have to continue to maximise the opportunities that this beach can bring to this community. And I will speak more to that later in my presentation. Additionally, Mero is well located, centrally located, providing the opportunities for people from the north, from the south and from the central part of the country to come into this community within a reasonable length of time. And so, all of this and of course, you the people, continue to make Mero what it is today. And I would like to say very importantly that I want to thank each of you for taking time off this evening to be here at this meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the priority areas for me as a Member of Parliament for Mero is that of education. And over the years, the government of Dominica has invested heavily in the area of education. Because we understand that an educated nation will contribute significantly to the development of that country. And that is important. And that is why we will continue to invest heavily from the early childhood stage up to tertiary and beyond. And this is a commitment that we have made as the government and as the Dominican Labour Party. And not only that, but we've gone ahead and embarked on a very ambitious agenda to ensure that by 2020, every household in this country will have at least one university graduate. And you can well imagine the amount of investment that the government has to make to ensure that this happens. And that is why there should be absolutely no excuses when it comes to the education of our children and providing them with opportunities. Because we've made available assistance in transportation. We've made available uniform assistance. We've put in place assistance for school books and textbooks. We've put in place allowances. So all of our students should be at school. And here in this community, every summer, we have in place a programme where we provide the opportunity for students and parents alike to fill in the necessary forms and to get the necessary uniform assistance and also we provide stationery for the young ones here in this community. And this here is no exception. Because we understand sometimes the challenges that you face as parents in sending your children to school. And we are making this opportunity available for you. And every child in Mero, every child in Mero who has completed high school, I would like to take the opportunity to encourage you to make the step to attend the Dominica State College. Because we'll be providing assistance for your tuition. We'll be providing assistance with a transportation allowance and any other assistance that is required for school or for attending the state college, we will be providing you with this assistance. And this is a commitment that I am making to you as a Member of Parliament. Because I believe that our children's education has to continue to take priority so that they can have a better life for themselves and they can come back and commit towards the development of the community here in Mero. So if parents, if you have any child who has completed high school and you may be scratching your head, wondering how are you going to send that child to college? Come, let's have a talk. And you can rest assured that your parliamentary representative will assure that the resources are available to send your child to the Dominica State College. But it doesn't stop here. Because here in Mero, we have engaged in a number of skill training programmes. And I'm very happy to see some of the young people engage in these programmes. And you'll recall that it was here in this community that we launched under the National Employment Programme, the farming programme. Where we provided the young men here in this community, Mero, with tools and equipment and a stipend. Because they came to me as a power-up and they told me power-ups were interested in farming. And I ensured that they got the necessary support to develop their farms. And I believe G I S still shows the documentary because this programme was launched here in this community. And I did it because I wanted to empower these young men to ensure that at the end of the day, they could be earning a living from the farm for themselves. And that is what development is about. And just on Thursday last week, or Wednesday rather, I sat right under the coconut trees over there with another group of young men from Mero who were interested in fishing. And moving around the community, I saw the interest and I initiated this meeting. Because I realised that they needed some more support. And we met under the trees right outside there. And we had a dialogue, we spoke. And I asked them, what are their plans? And coming from the discussion, they indicated to me what their plans were. That they wanted to set up a fishing shop in this community to provide, to clean the fish up properly, to smoke it, to sell to the restaurants in Mero and by extension, the rest of Dominica, and what are some of the things that they require. And I can tell you, we have already begun to assist them. And after the budget is passed, we provide them with some more assistance. So you see, my dear friends, it's a matter of developing a relationship with the people, understanding what their needs are and ensuring that at the end of the day, we provide the resources to meet the needs of the people. And moving along, you recall at the last meeting we had here in this community, right here in the chapel, I made a commitment to you to provide you with some small business support. And I have delivered this to the people of Mero. Providing you the support to continue to improve on your restaurants, your bars, your shops, your craft shops. Giving you the opportunity to build on yourself and to build on your business so that at the end of the day, you are able to make a dollar for yourself. And that is the support that we have given you. And I know that there are a few businesses that we have to give some additional support. And after the budget is passed, we will be providing you with that support. You can rest assured that you will get that support. And all of this ties in into the community of Mero, a small community, but a community that has tremendous potential. Tremendous potential. But we have to be able to harness that potential, ladies and gentlemen. And that is why we have to continue to work together. Because Mero has been a leader in the area of community tourism. And I believe, while it is true that we have done so much, there is still a lot more that has to take place. We have to continue to raise the standard. And that is why over the years, we've provided support to Mero Improvement Committee to ensure that the committee can better able to position itself to receive the tourist dollar. And I've always said that I believe we can make much more from the tourists here in Mero. There is much more that we can do. And I believe we can have a serious dialogue before the tourist season opens to find some creative ways that we can add more value. And the Minister of Tourism is here this evening for us. And he will speak more to that. But to find some creative ways that we can add more value to the tourism product here in Mero and to see how best we can continue to work together. Let me welcome Honourable Ian Douglas, who just ran here this evening. Welcome, Honourable Douglas. But ladies and gentlemen, in light of all of this, we have to ensure that if we really want to continue to make the tourists come to Mero and to make the money from the tourists, Mero has to be clean. The beach has to be clean. And we have to maintain proper garbage disposal mechanisms. And that is important. Because no tourist wants to come to a little place. No tourist wants to go to a beach. And when they come to the beach, the beach is dirty. We will be sending a bad signal for the tourists. And I believe all of the tourism stakeholders here in Mero, we need to put our efforts together and not try to put division in the community. Because if one of us... together and not try to put division in the community, because if one of us, if one of us suffers because the tourists doesn't come here, all of us will end up suffering, all of our businesses will end up suffering. So we have to look at the bigger picture and put our personalities on the side, and look at the bigger picture, and the bigger picture in all of this is Mero. And as the power-up, you have my commitment that I will do whatever it takes to ensure that we can add more value to the tourism product here in this community. And one of the projects that we are going to undertake in the upcoming financial year in Mero, we are going to undertake seriously yachting developments in this community. Because we believe Mero is well positioned, well positioned to receive yachts. It used to happen in the past when we had Castaways Hotel Blooming. And I believe the Ministry of Tourism has put in the budget an amount of half a million dollars, where we will develop a jetty in Mero, and all of the other infrastructure to ensure that we can bring the yachting industry here in this community, and we can even be on par with what is taking place in Portsmouth. And Honourable Douglas, who is here, he will tell you the transformation that has taken place in his constituency because of the yachting sector. And I believe here in Mero, we can have a similar program where we can build on the yachting sector, and we can have more tourist dollar here in this community, because there are several other services that will be associated with the yachting sector, that each and every one of us here in this community, who is serious about the sector, we can make a dollar. Because there will be opportunities for security services, there will be opportunities to provide laundry services, the cleaning of the yachts, all of these, your restaurants and your small shops, you will be able to make more dollars from it, once we have the yachting sector developed in this community. And I am fully on board with this project, but I want you to be on board with us here too, because it is an important project for the community, and it is one that will significantly benefit the community of Mero. And I believe we all have to put our heads and our hands together and work for this beautiful project for Mero. And so ladies and gentlemen, at the end of the day, each and every one of us has to ensure that we play our part. So when the new season opens, and you realize it was no coincidence that I brought the Minister of Tourism back here again, because tourism is the mainstay of the economy in Mero. The tourist dollar adds significant value in this community, so it's no coincidence that the Minister of Tourism is here again, because I believe we have more opportunities to benefit from the tourism sector. And of course, at the last meeting that we had, you raised some concerns with a lack of fire hydrants in the community. And as a member of parliament, I ensured that we got these hydrants installed. So now we have three new hydrants installed in the community, so that we can facilitate, one, the proper cleaning of the drains, and in case of a fire, we have the hydrants available. So we have one at the bus stop on the highway, we have one at the entrance, and there is one down at the bridge at the exit. So we have the hydrants in place, and that was one of the, one of the recommendations that you made to me at the last meeting, and that has taken effect. So ladies and gentlemen, your power-up is listening to you, and your power-up is working on your behalf. The issue of streetlights, particularly in the areas of Cuba Road, Castaways Development, London Road area, you raised that with me at the last meeting, and you've seen a number of streetlights being erected, all in an effort to ensure that we have more security at night, and we have, we are better able to walk in the night. And there is one that was placed at the exit of Mero as well. So you see, my dear friends, yes, you can clap, you can clap, Eric, you can clap. Because to some people, these may be little things, but to you, the beneficiaries, you can see the impact that it has made and the difference. And one resident of Castaways Development called me and said, "Power-up, thank you very much for the lights," because it has made a significant difference. And I know there are some areas that we have to do some more, and we'll get it done after the project. So Mrs. Shipley, your lights will be coming to you. We've also ensured that we have taken care of our elderly citizens, and we have twenty individuals who are seventy and over from Mero, receiving an allowance of three hundred dollars from the government every month, twenty individuals from Mero, and that is a significant number for a small community. Because the Labour Party, through its program, is ensuring that our senior citizens, they have a dollar at the end of the month that they can buy their medication, they can pay a small bill, they can go to the grocery shop in Mero and get something, because they have that money in their hands. And that is something that they did not have before, my dear friends. So we have to give God thanks and praise for these small mercies. And twenty-three elderly citizens here, they are receiving this allowance. But not only that, we have some of our elderly citizens who aren't able to take care of themselves, and we have placed them on the Yes to Care program, where they are given full attention, their meals are being cooked for them, their clothes has been washed, ensuring that they are properly taking care of their medication is on time, because we have to take care of our elderly, my dear friends. And so we are doing this ordinate effort to uplift the standard of living of our senior citizens. We have also commenced the washroom program in this community, and we have some challenges as well, because one of the problems we have is that a lot of the land that the, that the people have the residence on, the homes on, its land has been rented, and so the houses have been rented, so we have to get into in contact with the landowners, the houseowners, and sometimes it takes a longer process than expected. But as soon as we have ironed all these issues, we will continue the washroom program. We've started, and I want to comment publicly, Mr. Sarah, Client Sarah, the contractor, who has been doing a tremendous job so far in ensuring that we can have the washroom program up and running here in this community of Mero. And my good friend, the Honourable Minister of Housing is here, Honourable Reginald Ostry. And I want to make a commitment here tonight to you, the people of Mero, that once the budget has been passed, we will be providing housing assistance to every one of you who are in need of housing assistance. I have already had some names on the list, I know there are still some more, rest assured that I will come to you, we will get the proper estimates done, and we will fix your houses for you here in this community of Mero. Because we have to improve on your lives here in this community. And as your power-up, I take a personal responsibility in ensuring that it is done, because this is what you have elected me for, this is what you have placed your confidence in me for, to make representation on your behalf, and to ensure at the end of the day, your standard of living, your housing condition is improved, and you have my commitment that it will be improved, my dear friends. So those of you who need a new roof, we will do the complete roof for you. Those of you who are in need of a new home, we will do the complete home for you, because this is a commitment that we have made. And in fact, the Prime Minister has given me permission this evening to speak on us being on his behalf, to make that commitment to you, the people of Mero. So I already know where the monies are coming from to do that for you, my dear friends. So rest assured, we will improve on the housing conditions for you here in this community. We have also commenced throughout the country a program to rehabilitate all of the village's roads. And those of you in Mero who have very good memory, you remember the condition of this road? You remember the condition of this road? And it was Calvadaro who fixed this road for you? You remember the condition of this road, right? And it was Calvadaro who fixed this road for you? And rest assured, we'll continue to do some more work on it, because the end after the bridge, we'll complete it. And I have been in contact and dialogue with some of you who live in London Road, in Cuba Road, in Castaways Development, and the other areas. And the fact of the matter is, these areas are private developments, and your developer would have had the responsibility of fixing these roads for you. But you see, my dear friends, your power-up cares for you. Your power-up cares for you, and he's concerned about you, and some of you have spoken to me about it, and I have visited you and I have seen the condition of some of these roads. And rest assured, my dear friends, we will assist you in fixing some of these roads, and we will do it on a face-by-face basis, and ensure that it is done properly. We will engage local contractors here in the community, and we will ensure that we assist in the rehabilitation of these roads for you. Because even if it is the responsibility of your developer, and you have gone ahead, you have paid for your land, you have built your homes, but they have yet to do any work on the road, I believe we have to provide some assistance for you. So as your MP, as your humble servant, we will see how we can assist with the complete rehabilitation of some of the roads. We won't be able to do all of them at the same time, but we will do it in a face-by-face basis under this program. And rest assured, my dear friends, we will improve on the, on the road conditions in these areas. Because I have had the opportunity to visit all of these areas, I have met with some of you, I have spoken to some of you, and Mero is one of the rapidly developing communities in terms of village expansion. And when you go up to Cuba Road now and you see the houses that are there, beautiful houses. And some of the individuals who live here, people who have been away for a long time and they've come back with all their money, build their homes here in Dominica, made their contributions, and I believe, as the power-up, I have a responsibility to ensure that we meet some of the needs of you, the people, because you are part of Mero, and we have to continue to ensure that we meet your needs. So I will continue to visit you, and I have given some of my friends the assurance that tomorrow morning, God willing, I will visit some of you again, so I can speak with you again on some of the issues that you've raised with me. And so we'll continue the road projects, with the housing projects. And those of you, particularly the farmers of the Cuba Car Home area, you recall that at the last meeting, you had indicated for a long time, the Car Home Cuba Road, and we have serious production taking place up in Cuba Car Home, serious production, and I see some of the farmers here this evening. Dumas, you are here, and you can speak to that? You'll get a chance, you'll get a chance. Yes. You, you'll get a chance, you'll get a chance. And I see some of the farmers here, Jerry, one of the big farmers up in Car Home in Cuba. And we have made an investment of two million dollars to ensure that we have the Cuba Car Home Road completely rehabilitated, my dear friends. Completely rehabilitated. Because as your power-up, you spoke to me, and I listened, and I can tell you, I had to go to the Prime Minister myself, and I had to speak on your behalf and tell the Prime Minister, PM, I need this road for the residents and the farmers of Mero, of Cuba, of St. Joseph, of Salisbury, because we have productive farmers up there. And you've seen the quality of work that has already taken place, and as soon as the budget is passed, the project will continue in full bloom. Right now, the contractor is on the, on the worst end, up by Fira Robia, which is a very bad area, so I told him he has to, he has to go there. So they, they are there right now doing tremendous work, tremendous work up on that area, and we will continue to do the work in this area. And I really want to thank the farmers for your patience and tolerance, because you drove that road with your vehicles in terrible condition, and I want to thank you for your tolerance and your patience, the farmers. And you did not lose confidence in your power-up, because when I spoke to you, I told you that we will fix that road, we will continue to invest in you, the farmers of this country. And we have done it, and we will continue to do so. And the farmers of Mero, this week you got some fertilizer, right? Yeah, but those of you that have received it, it is in Mero, the fertilizer is in Mero, so you'll, you'll get it for the rest of the week. And, and we'll continue to provide you the inputs, we'll continue to provide you the inputs, so rest assured, you will continue to get the inputs that are required. Moving on, my dear friends, because like I said, I'm really touching up on a few things that obviously matters in, in the community of Mero. Earlier on in this year, I held a meeting with the, the committee here in Mero, very good meeting, very productive meeting, I see Mr. Prince is here, and some of the concerns that they raised, we have been able already to address some of them, but there are still some outstanding ones. And the one I believe that is very important, it has to do with the community center for Mero. And in my discussions and dialogue with the, with, with the, with the committee, they indicated to me the process that they will own, because the land has already been, the land has already been identified, and we have to be able to settle some of the issues with the land before we can move on to develop the project further. And all of you here this evening as my witnesses, and I believe as, as a power-up, I have to work along with the committee to develop this project. And rest assured, Mr. Prince and the rest of the committee members who are here, by extension to you, the villagers of the community, that after the budget has been passed, as a member of parliament, one of the projects on the constituency that I will look at seriously is providing the support to the Mero Enhancement Committee for us to take that process forward for the development of a community center for the community of Mero. This is a project that I believe is needed, because you can see this evening, we are in the chapel, and a meeting like this, real and truly, should be in a community center. And I believe this project is important for the community of Mero, and you have my commitment that we will work together with the committee, once the budget is passed, to do what is necessary to continue the process of developing this project of a community center for Mero. So you have my commitment on that to you, the residents of this committee. Another critical issue that was raised at that time and even before, was the development of the Mero playing field, very important project. And I know a number of you tonight, you are wondering what is the status on this. You recall that I've always said as a power-up, that this is one of the projects that we have to do, we have to complete. And that is why, a few months back, you had seen progress started on the development of the Mero playing field. The machines were there, working nicely. We had already budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards the works for that playing field. Because I understand the energy that our young people have, and they have to use that energy in a positive way. And I made a commitment to you, the people of Mero, that I would develop this playing field for you. And I have kept that promise, because you've seen the work start on that playing field. Because you've seen the work start on that playing field. But the issue of land ownership arose. And we're all familiar with it, I won't go into the nitty-gritty tonight. But what I can tell is that the lawyers on our side and the other lawyers, they are in the process now of getting surveyors from both sides to come and properly survey the field and to see how best we can bring a solution to this problem so that we can continue the development of that field. But rest assured, my dear friends, that as your power up, whatever it takes to complete that process, you have my commitment that I will get it done. That I will get it done. Whether it means that the government has to compulsory acquire the property, we will have to do it for you, the people of Mero. Whether it means that this process will end if a mediation and then both sides agree, whatever the case may be. But we will get it done. And you have my commitment this evening that we will get it done. Because this project is too important for this community. And all of us here in Mero know for a fact that for years, this playing field belongs to the community. And we have a responsibility in this community to stand up and to ensure that at the end of the day, Mero and Mero benefits from this. Because I will not rest, my dear friends, until the Mero playing field is developed and the young people of this community have an avenue to play their football, to play their rongas, to play their tennis. Because we had a very good plan for this playing field to ensure that we have the field properly rolled and playable. So that the young men can play their football, cricket on the pitch, the rongas for the women. And we're also going to do an area for a hardcore for basketball and also for tennis. Because the vision was seeing that Mero is a great contributor towards community tourism. The field and the other facilities would have provided opportunities for us to make more money from the tourists when they come here. So this project is still alive. And you can rest assured that whatever has to be done for us to complete this project, it will be completed, my dear friends. So rest assured of that. But ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is about you. And I've come to hear from you and to listen to you. And I also have my comrade ministers with me in this evening who will speak on some issues relating to the various ministries to you. But rest assured, as a member of parliament, I remain committed to you, the people of Mero. You have given me tremendous support over the years. And I'm very appreciative of that support. You have stood by me thick and thin through the good times and through the bad times. And I have a responsibility to continue to stand with you and to continue to ensure that your needs are met. So my dear friends, I'm happy that you are here. And I'm willing and able to continue the work that we have started towards the development of this community. I thank you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I will now invite the Honourable Minister of Tourism, my good friend Senator Robert Tong, to give you some brief remarks as we move this meeting forward. Thank you. Put your hands together for Robert Tong.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here, first of all. It's always a pleasure to be here in the beautiful community of Mero. And I'm not just saying that, I come here on a regular basis to enjoy your beautiful beach. And not just the beautiful beach. When you come down to Mero, you can basically leave everything in Roseau or anywhere in Dominica. You don't need to bring food. You don't need to bring water. You don't need to bring bears. You don't need to bring ice cream. You can get, you don't need to bring snacks. You can get everything in the beautiful community of Mero. And really and truly, that is what tourism is all about. It's all about providing as many services as possible to your residents. But I want to say hats off to, first of all, today, the Mero Community Tourism Organisation who do a fantastic job in ensuring that you get the representation that you require for Mero and also doing a good job in keeping the beach clean and everything under control. I also want to congratulate your Honourable Power Up for also doing a fantastic job. He says he's my good friend, but many times he breaks my fingers and my toes to make sure that you get what is required for your community. So I'm not sure if that's a good friend. But nonetheless, again, hats off to him. And he's very committed to getting things done. And when you make a promise to Kelv, you better make sure you keep it. Because every two days, he'll ask you the question, he'll send you a WhatsApp message. Let me tell you, he's very, very persistent. But nonetheless, we are concerned about community tourism. Because think about it this way, if someone comes to a beautiful island and there is no connection with the community, it means the person is really not going to have a fantastic time. It means they're going to come into your community because you're not benefiting from it in any way, shape or form. You really don't want to have any interaction with them. But the experience in Mero is totally different. You realise the importance of tourism as it provides many of you with jobs. And sometimes people say, you know something, I don't make money from tourism. But you make money whether it's directly or indirectly. Because it may not be you getting the job, it might be your mother working in the tourism business. I know persons, I know some ladies who walk the beach. And they said that is the way they've been able to take care of themselves. That's the way they've been able to take care of their families and send their children to school. So it has a major impact. The bus drivers who have to bring visitors to your beach, they in turn make money from tourism. But guess what? They must buy gas, they must buy food, they must buy tyres. So so many people benefit as a result of tourism. Based on the studies that we have right now, they say between 3,000 to 4,000 persons are directly impacted by tourism, which means they're getting money directly from it for a job. But when you add all of these other things that I just mentioned, even persons who work at Lime, they benefit from tourism because you must top up your phone. So it means jobs are created, whether directly and indirectly. And so it all impacts on tourism. So in terms of jobs, which are indirectly affected by tourism, it's over 11,000 jobs. So everybody who comes to Dominica and has a fantastic time in Dominica, it impacts on us in a positive way. And that is why we have to ensure that we give them the best possible service. Many of you have gone to certain stores. And when you go to the store, nobody looks at you. Nobody wants to take you on. Or sometimes you go to a restaurant and you're eating and you're trying to make a signal for the bartender or for the waitress and nobody's taking care of you. We have to provide our visitors and our locals with consistent, good service. I don't want to go to a restaurant and you have two cooks. One is a good cook and one is a bad cook. So if you go on the morning shift, you get the best tasting food. And when you go on the afternoon shift, you wonder what's going on. So we have to be consistent with the service that we provide to our residents on a regular basis. As I said, it can't be good today, bad tomorrow, good today, bad tomorrow. We have to consistently provide great service to our visitors. And again, thanks to Mr Kelvadaru. He's not only made sure that the residents from Mero have benefited from community tourism, but the Laia residents have also benefited from community tourism. St Joseph has also benefited from community tourism. Bells has also come from community tourism and obviously Mero. And again, this year, our financial year is July 1st to June 30th. Again, Mero is promoted highly on our budget. Why? Because you guys have, you guys are in the forefront. I dare say that you guys are some of the best in Dominica when it comes to community tourism. And as you can see, Mr Daru is already challenging Honourable Douglas in terms of yachting tourism. So I'm not sure that's why Mr Douglas ran outside a while ago. But why is yachting important? Many of you, you see the yachts passing by. They're always passing by Mero. They're never stopping in Mero. Something is, there's nothing wrong with Mero. But what you have to do, you have to have the facilities and the amenities for them to feel comfortable to come in your beautiful beach of Mero. And what we are doing, we are working with PACE. PACE is a Portsmouth Association of Yacht Security and Services. And what these guys do, before, guess what they were called? They were called yacht chasers. So the guys had to take their, I think back in the day, they had to row right here? They had to row out and try and stop the yachts. But sometimes the yachts pass so far from here, you'd have to use a quite amount of gas. But nowadays, because of the services that they provide to the guy, to the visitors, the visitors want to come to Port of An experience, what Dominica has to offer and also the service. Even down to security, the yachters feel so safe in Portsmouth. They will leave their boats and go on shore and not have to worry. If they didn't tie their boat properly and the boat goes adrift, guess who goes after the boat? The guys from PACE will actually go out, get the boat, bring it back on land, tie it properly and make sure. So this is exactly what we want to do in the village of Mero and a couple of other areas. Because when someone sails from Scottsdale and has to sail all the way down to Portsmouth, why not stop in Mero? And guess what happens when they stop? They need water, they need food, they need vegetables, they may want to pay gas, they may want to go on a tour. It might be easier for them to take a tour here to go into the valley because more than likely the cost might be more. So there are lots of opportunities that they can do. Even in Portsmouth, guess what the guys, one of the guys did? Instead of having to fill buckets with water and try to bring it on the yacht on the little boat, he actually ran a hose and put it out in the water. And he pays the person, not pays as Portsmouth Yacht Association, but the people pay him for the water. So there are many opportunities. The persons on the yachts have garbage, they must throw the garbage. So all of these are services that you can offer them so that more of that tourism dollar stays in Dominica. And also, we don't want it to stay in one area alone. So if we can provide great services here and additional services here, they will spend additional money here. If we provide the exact same services as other areas like in Portsmouth, I guess the money will be split. But what we really want them to do is to spend more money in Dominica. The more money that remains in Dominica, guess what it means? More what? More jobs, okay? And we can be able to take care of ourselves. Another thing that Honourable Kelv also mentioned, he says, hey, this is also especially persons in Bells and these other areas. These are also agricultural areas. How can agriculture benefit from tourism? And I say to him, it's very easy. If a visitor comes to Dominica, what's one of the things that they must do? Eat. And we want them to eat our local products. So the more visitors who come to our shore, the more visitors, very importantly, who stay longer in Dominica, it means the more money that stays in the country. We like cruise. Cruise is great. Cruise is exciting because you wake up in the morning and all of a sudden you see this humongous ship in the bayfront, you know? And you see all the people buzzing around. So you know, you see it. But the real money is in the stayover visitor. The real money is in the yachters. Why? Because they stay longer in the country. So a stayover visitor stays between seven to nine days, some of them 14 days. Or yachtie may stay five days. A cruise visitor stays how many days? One day or hours. Right. But guess what? Every dollar you get in your pocket will help you fill your pocket. True, true, true for us? Right. So the cruise visitors on average spend about $60 in Dominica. The cruise visitor spends between $150 to $200 a day in Dominica. And the stayover visitor spends between $300 to $400 US dollars a day in Dominica. So what we're trying to do is to attract as many individuals to Dominica, mix it up around so that they can stay in Dominica longer and spend more money in Dominica. And that is why we're trying to bring in the yachters into your area so that they too can spend more money in Dominica to impact on every one of you. Okay? So again, I think we've had a first consultation meeting with some organisations, but we have to reach out to the entire village because what you want is that when these visitors come, everybody is happy with what they're doing. We have to make sure we place the yachts and the, what we call the moorings, in the right place. We cannot go and place the moorings in front of our fishermen. Our fishermen would not like that. You cannot go and place the moorings directly in front of where everybody's bathing. So we all have to work together to create the best possible environment so that all of us can work together, all of us can benefit together in the best interests of our people. The other thing too is that safety is important. So too, we have to make sure, like in Portsmouth, you have the security officers, they have a little boat and they go around every so often just to make sure that nobody's troubling the visitor. Because one negative issue, you know how fast it spreads with the advent of social media? Before you had to make a long-distance call, now before you can even blink your eyes, the information is out there and your mother, your father, your cousin, whoever who's in Timbuktu is calling you and saying, yeah, I just heard that happening in Dominica. And you wonder, but how is that possible? So we have to protect what is ours, we have to protect our communities, we have to protect the persons in our communities so that they come back. What we want them to do is to come back again. What we want them to do is to spread the good news that, hey, Mero is the most amazing village to come to. It's not just about the beach anymore, it's about the people, it's about the tours, it's about the restaurants that we have here. And as I mentioned a while ago, stayover tourism is very important. I went on Airbnb and many persons nowadays can rent their home. You can rent a room. So there's Airbnb, there's bookings.com, there are many other options. If you just go on Airbnb and you search for Mero, Dominica, you see over 17 properties where persons can book their holidays and stay there. So even in the community of Mero, you have 17 properties with many rooms, you know? So hats off to you guys. Because it also means that your rooms and your houses have to be in good condition. Okay? So we also need to have, at some point, we have to put standards in place to make sure that we're not messing up ourselves. But it also means that in your community, you don't just have the visitors who come on the cruise ship. You don't just have the visitors who pass through. You also have visitors who are living in and around your areas. So they too are tourists and we have to begin to provide service for them. And that's why when the Honourable Kelv Daru says that you have small business ministry, you have to be, not all of us are going to be entrepreneurs. Some of us are going to be employees, some of us are going to be self-employed, some of us are going to have businesses where we hire people. And at some point in time, some of us would have made so much money, we can just sit back and live on the interest that we're making like Bradley over here. So it is important that there are so many opportunities coming around. You have to begin to look and see which ones that you are in tune with and which ones you can capitalise. What you don't want to happen is that all of these opportunities are passing by. The number of people coming to Dominica is increasing. And then one day you're going to say, but what happened there now? How he built that big building over there? How he has so much people over there, you know, coming to him? Because he saw what was happening and the person put things in place. So if you are a person who's into business, if you're an entrepreneur, if you're a hustler, look at those opportunities and see what services you can provide to those individuals. Take for example, I mentioned the yachters. Water is a simple thing. A guy who has a proper boat, who can now put his nice vegetables on the boat and paddle his boat out or even a kayak and go and sell to them. Simple things, bread. Why if I'm a young guy, and I mean many guys in Portsmouth, they'll tell you, that's how they started selling craft, selling all sorts of services. Why can't you have a little boat or even a paddleboard and get the fresh bread from the bakery and bring it to the person on the yacht and sell it to them? So there are many, many opportunities. And like my father was taught me, opportunity favours the prepared. But those of you who are not entrepreneurs, you're going to want a job. When you get the job, make sure you do the job well. Make sure you give great service over and over and over again. So as we mentioned, we continue to provide support to the village of Mero and your other beaches. Even down to Salisbury, we've provided them with chairs, beach chairs. Again, just to make sure that, what some people have been saying recently is that Dominica doesn't have sufficient to offer. So our role too is to ensure that when a visitor comes to Dominica, they have to come back again. Even if they're here for seven days, there's so many things. Even if they're here for seven days, there's so many things for them to do. They can come back over and over again. And even the visitor on the cruise ship, from what I remember, over forty percent of them have been to Dominica already. And if they come to Dominica three times, they obviously don't want to come back to the exact same beach. They want to see the exact same thing, they also want to see new things. So the visitors will begin to love Dominica and come back to Dominica over and over again. They also want new opportunities. Just like in St. Joseph, you have Surprise Beach and you have the, what do you call it? I don't know if it's a jungle gym, but like a water park. So there are many opportunities that we can rely on. In terms of support, we've continued to provide support to community tourism. So the Ministry of Tourism has actually provided funding to hire three persons for the community tourism, the Dominica Community Tourism. So we've hired, through them, we've hired and put the funds to hire the manager, to hire the liaison officer and also the project writer. And I ask you to take the opportunity, if there is a project writer, so it means if you have ideas for your community, you can actually go to that organization and they can write a project for you. They can even seek funding out of Dominica or through us as the Ministry of Tourism to put projects in place that will benefit each and every one of you in the community through tourism. So we ask you to use it wisely so that it can do the best for our country. I want to say to you freely, the Prime Minister of Dominica, the government of Dominica is committed to improving access into Dominica because many persons say sometimes it's very difficult to get to Dominica. You have to spend too much time to get to Dominica. And that's why you'd have heard the Honorable Prime Minister say that the government of Dominica is committed to building an international airport in Dominica. But guess what? The international airport is gonna take time to build. It's not gonna be built in one year or two years or three years. But guess what? In the meantime, we still have to improve access. And the Prime Minister has given us the mandate to make sure in the meantime we can improve access. So many of you would have heard that. Any of you have heard Norwegian Airlines? So Norwegian Airlines provides amazing rates to travel to Guadalupe and Martinique. A friend of mine just sent his three kids to the States. Guess how much he paid for their ticket from Martinique to the States? Guess how much? How much? He paid seventy-nine US per ticket from Martinique to America. So what we've realized is that they have fantastic rates. Obviously, somebody subsidizing those flights. So what we're gonna do is to capitalize on that connection. So we are gonna be working, we actually begin the discussions with Air Antilles so that when that flight comes to Guadalupe and Martinique, as opposed to having to overnight and still take the ferry, you have the option of taking a flight and coming in the same day. Again, improving access and making it easy to come to Dominica. Again, so that more visitors can come to Dominica. We also have challenges coming from Barbados sometimes and even St. Lucia. St. Lucia has an airport called Heronore, it's an international airport. That airport has as many international flights as Barbados. So we are working with TIA, TIA Two Thousand. It's a new airline again so that you have another option to come to Dominica. So as opposed to just one option, we're trying to give you multiple options. One of the other things the Prime Minister is pushing us to do again is to try and have a weekly flight direct from the USA to Dominica. So we are in discussions with many of the big airlines again to try and make it easier, not just for you as Dominicans to come to Dominica, but also for the visitors. My mandate and my focus is on tourism. So the more persons we can get to Dominica, easier and faster, hopefully it'll improve the number of people coming to Dominica. But this does not only have implications just for tourism. Imagine when the flight is going back. Imagine how many different agricultural products we can put on that international flight and send back to the USA. You always see the videos of persons showing the price of, what's the price of tuna in Dominica? Nine dollars. I think I saw some persons with the price of tuna almost about twenty US a pound in the USA. So it means that if we have those type of flights, we can now begin to capitalize, not just for tourism, but even for agriculture, for persons selling their pepper sauce. So there's so many opportunities. But just remember, when the opportunity is there or it's coming, if you wait until the last minute, somebody else may jump on board. So you have to listen to what your government is doing. You have to make sure you put things in place. So when it's in place, you can jump and capitalize and ensure that you can earn a proper living and move forward. So again, your government is committed. We're not just talking, we are putting things in place. I think last year when I came here, we mentioned that we were changing all of our market reps. So what is a market rep? A market rep is that we have a person in America promoting Dominica. We have someone in England promoting Dominica, we have someone in Germany. I was not happy with those market reps because they were there for two years and the numbers we were getting were not sufficient. And I said, you know something? We have to change them. We changed all of them except the market rep in London because they were doing a pretty decent job. And I can say to you, Tropical Storm Erica knocked us back a bit, you know? It really impacted on the hotel sector because imagine if you're expecting to fill your hotel and you only have half of the rooms, it makes a big difference on you. But what I can say to you is that tourism is moving in the right direction. In terms of stayover visitors, our stayover visitors for January to May this year is the highest it has ever been. For the first five months, it's the highest it has ever been since two thousand and seven. So what is important is that it is moving in the right direction. More people are coming to Dominica. And if we can ensure that we give the best possible service to the persons, they will spend more money in Dominica. And that is one of the focuses for us this year is to ensure that we train more individuals to provide the best possible service. Just recently, we had seventy-four, is it seventy-four? It was the frontline people. The frontline people are the persons who interact with the visitors the first time, the bus drivers, the vendors. We've trained over fifty of them again to make sure that when people come, they have a good experience. We just finished retraining about fifty-four of the taxi drivers. Again, because sometimes the taxi driver is the first person you meet and the last person that you meet. So one of our main focuses this year is to ensure that we provide and we improve on the amount of service so that when persons come to Dominica, they have a much better time. And why do we want them to have a much better time? To spend more money and to also come back to Dominica. But very importantly, to tell persons of the great experience that they had in our beautiful country of Dominica. So again, we are moving in the right direction. If you're an entrepreneur, look for the opportunities. If you're an employee, do the best that you can do. Get trained, ask your bosses to get you trained. Sometimes we, well, I'm wearing a political hat now so I can't say we anymore. When I used to be in the private sector, many times the private sector doesn't like to spend as much as they should when it comes to training. But I'm saying this year and the next year, we need to put more emphasis on training our staff and making sure they're up to the particular level. Some of us as owners of businesses, we are able to train the people, but many of us, we don't have that expertise. So we have to find persons who can train our staff to give the best possible service. So again, we are committed to community tourism, we're committed to the village of Mero. We provided some financial support last year, well, this year, last year, for the building. I think we provided the LPUs, but I think the community wanted to do it in August. They were the challenge with that when the year closes, everything gets cleared away. So in the future, once you receive your LPO, to do the necessary work, we need to do it right away to make sure that the funds are spent and the funds that are coming for the next year will be used for something else. So again, thank you very much for being here. If you have any questions, I'll be more happy to answer after.
Thank you very much. You got a chance, you got a chance. Thank you very much, Minister Tong. And very importantly, you heard the minister mention that we began a consultation for the various stakeholders for the development of the yachting project for Mero. And we will soon, we will soon embark on a community-wide consultation where we'll bring the entire community together so we can share with the concept of that project. Because we want the community to be part of the project, it's our project. So we will have follow-up meetings with the entire community so we can share the concept of that yachting program, project with you for the next financial year. At this time, I want to invite the Minister of Trade and Employment, the Honorable Ian Douglas, to speak to us this evening. Put your hands together for Minister Douglas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Honorable parliamentary representative and Minister for Information and Information Technology and Communications, Honorable Kelva Darrow. Minister of Tourism and Urban Renewal, Honorable Robbie Tong. Minister for Housing, Water Resource Management and Lands, Honorable Reginald Ostry. Permanent Secretary, Ms. Privo. Mr. Esprit, a very good friend from the neighboring community of Salisbury. All other persons in the hall this evening, good evening. I want to thank your parrep for inviting me here this evening. It's always a pleasure for me to be here in Mero. I had fond memories when we met here a couple of months ago. Probably it was in maybe January or February, when we first started the Tong Hall meetings. And I came here and I was sitting in the audience really, not on the head table. But the parrep asked me to share a few words. And I was happy to share a few words with you, particularly on the important issue of the Citizenship by Investment Program. Of course, you know now that that is a household name in Dominica and everybody understands the program and agree with the program, notwithstanding the fact that the leader of the opposition had just come from the United States of America trying to black eye the program. But thank God that I think by and large, the masses of Dominica understand the program now, understand that this is a blessing from God really. And this is really the goose that lays the golden egg right now. And we are very fortunate to have it. And what we are doing with it is to use the Citizenship by Investment Funds really to develop the people of Dominica, to develop you. And so it's a very special pleasure and a privilege for me to be in Mero this evening because being the immediate past Minister of Tourism, I can identify with you. I feel very much at home in the Mero area, in the Mero community. I remember one of the first activities that we had was the Community Tourism Expo. And the first community tourism expo which was held, I think back in maybe two thousand and seven or thereabouts, was held right here in Mero because we understood and appreciated the might and the power of the Mero experience as far as community tourism is concerned. And we had a very good expo here and then the expo went on from strength to strength. And so you must see yourselves as very fortunate. You must have pride in what you have done and in what you have created and you must credit it and protect it because a lot of other communities around Dominica would love to have what you have. And to see that you have mobilized yourselves so efficiently to promote and to enhance the natural God-given attributes of the Mero area is absolutely nothing short of remarkable. And every time I have the opportunity, I must commend this community on what you have been able to do. And so I believe that there is tremendous possibility for the continued development of the Mero area. Even so much so right now, that any public holiday you have, look, we have August Monday coming up and we had May Day and before it Easter Monday. Any public holiday you have right now in Dominica, Mero, Rivals, Purple Turtle and the other beaches in Portsmouth as far as the attendance is concerned. Right now, any band, every Sunday, thank you very much. The Minister of Tourism was just indicating to me, not even every public holiday, but every Sunday, the Mero beach and the Mero vibes is packed. And that is what we really want to see. That is what sustainable development is about. Sustainable development meaning that you can create an activity that will live on forever. And will live on forever and you can generate revenue, you can earn an income from it. And as the Minister of Trade, I'm happy to accompany the Minister of Tourism and your parrep here this evening to speak about all of the tremendous opportunities that exist in the community of Mero for you and for you to take advantage of. I mean, never before in the history of governance, certainly since independence in nineteen seventy-eight, this year we'll be celebrating what? Thirty-nine years of independence will be celebrated in Dominica. And never before in the history of government in Dominica have we seen a government giving so much to its people. And that is clear, nobody can argue that. That that is beyond contradiction. And so we are here to tell you about some of those most important initiatives that you can take advantage of for enhancing your own socioeconomic development, for enhancing your lives really. And one of them that comes to mind in the whole context of the Mero beach vibes and the whole tourism atmosphere that is created here is a small business unit. The small business unit because of the Citizenship by Investment Program and the amount of revenue we've been able to generate because of the Citizenship by Investment Program, the government makes available to you a grant for the development of your innovative ideas. So there is no reason why every single amenity that is required by a visitor at Mero should be available. From tablet and coconut cheese, right back to bakes and acra should be available. From rum punch, going right back to craft, to coconut hats, to coconut birds. I mean, you name it, the Mero people should get involved. You have already some of the best restaurants that exist on the West Coast. Exist right here, some of the more popular restaurants and places to dine exist right here. All you have to do is to add to that and to build up upon it. And so tourism in Mero can be a yearly thing. You do not even have to, you don't even need a season in Mero for tourism. You can have tourism on a yearly basis. And the Minister of Tourism have quite clearly enunciated to you and have told you what the boys from Portsmouth have been able to do and have been able to develop their trade to world class to the point where every single yachting entity around the world right now is speaking about the possible association of yacht services and security. And those guys came from humble beginnings just like you. All they had was the beach when they started off in the late nineteen seventies. And today, they have built up a product that all of us, not only in Dominica, but in the Caribbean can be proud of. And so I can tell you, I can speak for them because I'm part of them. I can tell you that they are ready, willing and able to share that experience with you. You can have the small boats on the water there servicing all of the yachts and you can start small and develop this thing. And the Minister of Tourism have told you the amount of revenue that you can generate as a result of that. So really, the ball is in your court and you can take this tourism initiative and make it one of the biggest and best money earners in Dominica because you have what it takes to do that. So this is a tremendous opportunity. But also, what I really want to speak to you about also as the Minister of Trade is the tremendous opportunity that exists also in agriculture. Because right now, you may be surprised to know that the bulk of agricultural produce reaching the multipurpose packhouses that we have just opened. Because of course you should know by now that government last year, last year, what about July, opened up two facilities for getting fresh produce. Just like some of you already remember, in the old days in the nineteen seventies, we had what was called the depot. So right now, we have the multipurpose packhouses, one in Roseau and one in Portsmouth, where you can bring all of the fresh produce that you can plant and they will take it from you. They will take it, they will wash it, they will sort it, they will weigh it, they will pack it and they will make it available to all of the hocksters. So the hocksters and the various exporters in Dominica go into places like Guadalupe, Martinique, St. Martin, St. Thomas, Totola, the US Virgin Islands and all of those places know that they can come to the packers now and get anything that they require. In fact, some of them, even before they get back to Dominica with their vessels, like I'm sure you know Stone. Stone is from Salisbury. His name is Mr. Clifton... Clifton Tullaw, thank you. Mr. Clifton Tullaw, better known as Stone, is one of the largest exporters of yams in Dominica today. And all of that is being planted right there in And all of that is being planted right there in the Cuba area, Car Home area. And your Par Rep is, I just heard your Par Rep say he's doing the roads. And that is a wonderful, that is music to my ears. Because right now, as the Minister of Trade, I am begging on my knees, Suppley, please. We are begging for fresh produce to export. The amount of demand for dashing that we have, right now, we have, we have a new contract, one in England, where we have to export a forty foot container of dashing every month. And then we have another contract in the United States of America in Miami. And they want another container of dashing every month. So that's every two weeks, we can ship every fortnight. We want to ship a container of dashing. And I can tell you, we want more people to go into production. Stone and those guys cannot get enough yams. I mean, it is almost shameful, it is sorrowful that today the people making money in agriculture, in the Car Home Cuba Road area, are the foreigners who have come here. And there is tremendous opportunity, government is giving you all the inputs you require. Look, the Par Rep spoke about all of the fertiliser you want, you can get. All of the other inputs like the Gramac Zone and the, all of the other things that you need, you can get it, we are providing, we are helping you to be able to produce. I mean, imagine, imagine in one year, the packhouses have been able to generate one million dollars in the trading of fresh produce. One million dollars. That means on a, on a monthly basis, a hundred, almost a hundred thousand, well eighty five thousand dollars is being circulated around Dominica in the economy. And I may dare say, I would estimate that at least twenty five to thirty thousand dollars comes from this area, based on the amount of food that is being produced in the Cuba Car Home area. From dashing to yams, ginger, sweet potato, even cucumbers. I had to ask the guys in the packhouse the other day if it's porridge they make in the cucumbers in Matnik. Because Matnik requires at least, Matnik is asking for, they're demanding about ten thousand pounds of cucumber every week. And we had pains with to going around the country to find that amount of produce. So that is a tremendous opportunity that is just waiting for the farmers of this area to exploit. You have again, right there in your vicinity, fifteen minutes from you, government has built and opened and is operating the abattoir. The abattoir is now operating. So there is no reason why more of you in this area, in this community, should not go into the production of chickens, at the very least chickens. If you don't want to do pork, at least chickens. In Dominica, I mean, Honorable Tong, in your past life, you were an importer of chickens. And when I did my research, Dominica is importing at least, correct me if I'm wrong, in the region of about twenty million dollars a year in meat products. And maybe out of that, maybe at least half of that, between ten and twelve, is chicken parts. Fourteen million, thank you very much, fourteen million dollars in chicken, we importing. And that is money that can stay in our country. That is money that can remain in the Mero area and Mero, between Mero and, and where is the abattoir, in, in Lyu Park, is just about what Par Rep about. Fifteen minutes drive, fifteen, twenty minutes drive. And they will come for the chickens from you. And your Par Rep through the Small Business Development Unit will make a grant available for you to buy your chicks. Also to, he will help you to build the facility, the poultry. And one of the most successful chicken farmers in Dominica today lives in Mero. My partner, I'm the ex police officer. Shipley lives in Mero and Shipley is one of the most successful poultry farmers. So there is no reason why the Shipley experience cannot be replicated in other areas in Mero. So ladies and gentlemen, you know, you, you have a great opportunity. And you have a Par Rep full of life and energy, who is ready, willing and able to work with you to make those things happen, brothers and sisters. It can happen on both sides of the angle. It can happen in tourism, it can happen in, in agriculture. In tourism again, the Emerald Pool is right there. So if you have a thriving yachting business in your harbour, the tolls to the Emerald Pool is right there. Now that the Minister of Water Resource Management have almost completed the West Coast Water Supply. Are we, I'm almost completed, gentlemen, the West Coast Water Supply. The Milton Falls, which is just as good as the Emerald Pool in Syndicate right there, half an hour away from you, will be open and available for tourists. So you have a choice of taking your visitors to the Emerald Pool or you can take them to Milton Falls, which is just as beautiful as Emerald Pool. So we can build up a cadre of tour guides right here in the area. And before, we used to have a sanitary problem in the Mero area because there were not enough washrooms. I know about it because I used to be in tourism and that's one of the things. And I know for a fact that the Par Rep has launched an onslaught against, you started, against the arm of, the eradication of pitler trains and the construction of washroom facilities. So you are well ahead of the game. You are, the, the head of the plane, the front of the plane have lifted up already. All you have to do is to gain velocity right now and to sail into the skies of prosperity, brothers and sisters. That is what we are here to tell you. We are here to hear from you because we go into a new budget. But we are also here to tell you what we have done for you already and what we are presently doing to set the platform for prosperity in the Mero area. There is no reason to feel threatened or doubtful about anything. The future of Dominica looks bright. And you have to stay on board and stay with your Par Rep and make sure that Mero gets back to the glory days when we had the Castaways Hotel booming. And again, it was the Dominica Labour Party who built the Castaways Hotel when our founder, Eo Libra, was the premier. So we know how to bring development to the Mero area and we will continue to bring more development to you, the people of Mero. I mean, look at it, in Barbados, you go to Oyston's Fish Festival. Anybody that go to Barbados must go Oyston's. From time Thursday night, hit Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Oyston's swinging. And Oyston's really doesn't have anything really to shout about. Oyston's is right there on the main road, Oyston's have no beach for people to bathe, Oyston's have no scenery, nothing, right there in the heart of the commercial centre. There is just businesses, KFC and Cheffet and all those other couple hotels around. In Mero, you have much more than that. You have scenery, you have the beach, you have every single thing that makes it possible for you to rise to be the best entertainment scene in Dominica from Thursday right back to Sunday, brothers and sisters. So that is why we are here, that is why we, we, we want to explain to you what we're trying to do. And everything we want to do is to benefit you. I mean, in the height of the austerity programme, when the government was going through its hardest times, its most challenging times, in between two thousand and two thousand and one, two thousand and two thousand and three, when the treasury of Dominica was empty, public servants couldn't get their salaries on time in nineteen ninety seven and ninety eight. And that is what we met when we came to office. And you stood with us, you understood what we were trying to do. You understood that we were trying to repair the economy. We're trying to bring things back on an even keel. You have made the sacrifices. Right now is about us taking you to the next level. We've always promised that we'll take you to the next level. We take you to the next level in education, in health, in job creation, in the overall health of the economy, in the overall fiscal condition in the country. We promise that we would have made your lives better. And that is what we continue to do. And we're doing all of this and, and at the same time, not one social programme have we sacrificed. Every single social programme, we have not only continued, but we have expanded. It's the first time in the history of Dominica, and I say that without any fear of contradiction, that you have the most amount of students studying all over the world. Nobody can contradict that. I mean, anything, any student want to study right now, anywhere in the world, the government will help you to go and study. We are spending fifteen million dollars on education right now in Dominica. I mean, look at healthcare, look at healthcare. Through the Public Support Programme, anybody in Dominica before time, before this government, anybody who had a serious critical emergency would, would, would probably die if they didn't have the money to take them out to go to Matnik or to Guadalupe for serious medical intervention. Right now, you do not even have to leave Dominica because we have the intensive care unit in Dominica. And if you have a serious medical condition, your life can be saved right here in Dominica. If it is too urgent a situation that the intensive care cannot handle, the government of Dominica will pay to fly you out. Even right now, brothers and sisters, the country is doing so well that we have just started a pilot programme. The pilot programme is a trial to see how the bigger thing going to work, which is the National Health Insurance Scheme. So every single Dominican, no matter what your station in life, you will be able to get medical care when you need it. And we have started with mothers, young mothers, I believe, under thirty five, who have young children under a year old. Will receive medical care free of charge from the state. And in a couple of months, the brand new Princess Margaret Hospital will be completed. So we wouldn't even have to worry about going to Matnik or to Guadalupe or to Trinidad for urgent medical attention. We will have a state of the art, number one facility in the region. International treatment being available to our citizens right here in Dominica. Thanks to the Dr Roosevelt Scary, the lead Labour Party government, brothers and sisters. You know, and I am enumerating all those things so that we do not take those things for granted. Because if we go back merely twenty years ago, these things were not available, brothers and sisters. We were made promises that were not fulfilled. We were made promises about dollar, pound of bananas that never came true, brothers and sisters. Don't forget those days, this was the reality of the Dominica we lived in. We were living in a Dominica where those of us who worked for government, our social security contribution to social security was not being paid by government. So if perchance we had fallen sick or we were led incapacitated, we could not go to social security and ask for any benefits because the government was not paying social security benefits. We were in a situation where the National Bank of Dominica was being owed millions and millions of dollars. There were millions of dollars of checks, unpaid checks in the treasury. The checks were written to people that government was owing. John Brown, thirty five dollars, Mary Jane, two thousand dollars, Sylvia Thomas, forty five thousand dollars. But the treasury could not pay the checks because there was no monies in the treasury against which those checks could be paid. Today, we see where government is even putting on more social programmes because of the state of health of the economy, brothers and sisters. And that, those things are issues that touch your very lives. Tonight, we are in a community meeting, so we're not talking labour or freedom or workers, we're not talking politics. We're talking about governance, we're thinking that things that are germane to you. Things every citizen in every country has a right to enjoy. You have a right to enjoy your country and a government has a right to work for you because you put a government in to work for you, to make your lives better. And that is what we are focused on, making your life better. And so the Par Rep has touched on all those aspects of Mero development that have been tackled, that is being handled at present and will be handled in the future. So one thing you must do is to take down all of the issues that you want to handle in Mero. Like a Mero development plan for the next fifteen to twenty years. And so you do some of them in the short term, because some of them can be done now. You do some of them in the medium term, between the five and ten years. And some of them in the long term, but you can start planning for them. That's how a successful community plans. And I can see a successful community here. I, I see a little Portsmouth, yeah? Years ago, Portsmouth was, was a sleeping giant. And right now, Portsmouth is awakening to take its real position in Dominica as one of the economic hubs of Dominica, especially in tourism. So that's why I'm talking to you here and I'm mentioning Mero, but in my mind, I'm thinking about Portsmouth. That's how close I feel, how connected I feel to you, the people of Mero. So once again, there is a very good opportunity. We live in great times, it's tremendous, a tremendous opportunity for you, the people, concentrate on your community. Because what you leave behind is what the foundation your children will have to build upon. And we, in the government, we are standing on the shoulders of some great men. Men who have sacrificed their lives, men like Rosie Douglas and Pierre Charles, who really sacrificed so that we could be here fifteen years later, really talking about the success that we have made of a dire situation that we met. And we want to continue to share that prosperity with you. Thank you very much for inviting me and God bless you.
Thank you very much, Minister Douglas, for your very profound contribution to the meeting here this evening. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I will provide you the opportunity to seek clarification, ask any question, make a comment if you have a comment. Or if you just wanna say, thank you, you could, you could also do that. So I will open the floor, I think there's a mic. You have a mic? So if you have a question, if you have a comment, if you have a suggestion. Yeah, Mister Dimmer will stand if you, I see you, you will stand all the time, yeah, use the mic.
My best options, since, since after Arika, um, after Arika hurricane, Arika, we didn't block for over, over two, almost two years then, two years, alright? So I've been suffering from that road and carrying load over miles. I've been suffering from that, that's a pain of mine in my heart. He's my good Par Rep. And praise God, let's, let, let me, let God have you there with us, alright? And that's, that's the only problem I have. Alright, Mister Par Rep?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, a pleasant good night to each and every person. A pleasant good night to our cabinet of colleagues. And a special good night to my Honourable Parliamentary Representative. Um, tonight I stand to share my, my contributions to this meeting. But prior to that, I would love to introduce myself. My name is Darren Lloyd and like many of us in here tonight, I too am a constituent of the Saint Joseph constituency. I reside here in Mero, cast to its development to be more precise. And for those of you who may know me, you would know that I don't often speak so much. And I usually think a lot before I open my mouth and speak. And I usually observe everything around me. As a matter of fact, for the past few years, I've been observing the political landscape in my country. And I've been drawn to a conclusion that no one government is perfect. Neither that, neither is any one man a mountain. And I believe that we as Dominicans, and more than just Dominicans, I believe that we as human beings, we must learn to appreciate, acknowledge and recognise the good when it is good, just as we have acknowledged and recognised the bad when it is bad. And tonight I stand to speak for a silent mass of young individuals from across our great nation. And prior to that, I would love to share two short testimonies of how caring this government administration is. The first testimonies of a young medical school student, who was only missing six weeks to complete school. And one morning, she was approached by the schooling authorities and she was promised a dismissal letter at the end of the day because she could not continue paying her tuition fees. You can only begin to imagine how devastating that news was to that medical student. You can only begin to imagine the amount of sacrifices that she had made to be in medical school, far less to be an exceptional straight A student in medical school. And that young student had exhausted all of her financial resources so that she could not turn to any more banks for loans. She could not turn to any more family members for grants, neither could she rely on any more friends for support. However, she was advised that there is one more friend that she could turn to, that was the government of Dominica. So on a desperate attempt, that young girl decided to message our Honourable Prime Minister via WhatsApp. And she personally asked me to message our parliamentary representative standing right in front of you, explaining her current situation, which I did of course. And these two young guys, they assessed the situation. And your Honourable Prime Minister responded, or he made it a point of duty. Even before that, these two young leaders, they responded. even before that, these two young leaders, they responded in the most coincidental way. And that is, "We are going to help you." And your honourable Prime Minister made a duty to let that school know that this medical student that you promised, this dismissal letter, is not just a medical student at your schooling institution, rather, she's a medical student from the Commonwealth of Dominica. She is my medical student, and she's going to complete a tenure here at your schooling institution. As a matter of fact, she's not going anywhere. Words from your mouth of, your Prime Minister, words from the mouth of your Prime Minister. And the Honourable Roosevelt Scary worked collectively with our parliamentary representative, together with the Ministry of Education, and they had less than eight hours to work. In less than two hours, these two young visionary leaders allocated and approved of over half a hundred thousand EC dollars just so that this medical student could finish school. And to many of us, to many of us, this is just another Nancy story. Probably just another story to probably make the government look good or to score some political points. But if you place yourself in this situation, you'll understand, or if you place yourself in the position of that mother, you'll understand that this is real life. You will see that your child's sacrifice is going to be, is going to go in long the dream. All of, everything you have sacrificed for a child is going along the dream. And you are seeing your child's sanity about to be sacrificed because this one situation could might as well send anyone schizophrenic. If you put yourself in the situation of that medical student, and you know that you had sacrificed so much, a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of meals, and you are being told that you are going to be dismissed from school, how would you feel? How would you feel knowing that at the end of the day, you have to pack your bags and you have to return to your country to face banks to repay hefty student loans, face family members who gave you grants, and you have to pay them back? And at the end of the day, you don't even have a degree that you can fall back on after all of that sacrifice that you had made. And then here comes your Prime Minister, your parliamentary representative and your government. And they tell you that "We are going to help you", and at the end of the day, they stick to that promise. Honestly, as that medical student, how would you feel about that government? And I love this lesson that these two young leaders taught that girl because it taught her how to have hope. And I believe that this is a valuable lifelong lesson because they taught her how to have hope in the bleakest of moments. They taught her about how to have hope in the face of uncertainty, hope in the face of adversity. These two young leaders taught that young girl about the audacity of hope. My next short testimony, and I promise that one will be shorter, is of a young boy, so a young boy, fresh out of college, recently scored a job, and he was raised again by a single committed mother with a number of kids. And the only thing, this young boy is doing everything in his abilities to support his family at the best of his abilities. And the only thing that keeps him going on a day-to-day basis is a dream that one day, he could successfully become the best personnel in his field of study. That's the only thing keeping him going. And after conversing with the Honourable Calva Daru, standing right here, they can attest to all of these words. After conversing with the Honourable Calva Daru, our parliamentary representative saw something in this young boy's eyes. He saw his unflinching determination and his willingness and hungerness to succeed. And the Honourable Calva Daru knew well that this boy came from a household that opposed the government. However, he said, "Son, I'm going to help you." He did not ask him, "Where is that next X going to be?" Or, "What are your political affiliations?", or "Who are you going to support at the next general elections?" He said, "Son, I am going to help you." And the Honourable Calva Daru did every single thing in his power to see that boy score the full scholarship. Right now, he's well off on his way to becoming the best personnel in his field of study, where he can return to his country and make a deliberate contribution. And many people, many persons might say that this is the common responsibilities of any government. But I believe that this is a great government administration because I believe that a great government administration is one that can pinpoint the needs of its people into attending to these needs. Now, I said, and I stood up my promise that I'll speak for young persons. And my primary concern is for young persons across our nation. And the Honourable Calva Daru, I heard you mention quite a lot about fishing. And I believe in the proverb that "It is better to teach a man how to fish rather than to catch a fish for him. That way, he would not have to come back to you." So I would like to know, and I hope that you guys are hearing me clearly, I'd like to know as a government, what are we doing to teach all young men how to fish? And when I say that, I don't mean that in a literal sense. I mean to say, what are we doing to assist all young men to sustain permanent employment in fishing? Because in the village of Mero and in Layu, Saint Joseph, we have a lot of enthusiastic young guys who are interested in fishing, as you mentioned, Mr Daru. So I would like to know as a government, what are we doing to mobilise more for young men to get into fishing careers? And more than just fishing, what are we doing as a government to create permanent, sustainable employment for our citizens from the Saint Joseph constituency? I thank you so very much for listening to me. These are all of my concerns, my comments and my questions. A pleasant good night to each and every person.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Darren. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Sheila Mason. And I would like to say thank you to the government on behalf of the small business money which they give to us. So I would say thank you again. And there are people who receive it, and I don't think they ever say thank you to the government, which is unfair. Because the more they get, the more they want, and they're not saying thank you. Some of them take it and they do, the government should put something in place. Like when they give you the money, you do what you have to do with it. You don't take it to do other things. Because that money should go to somebody else who wants it. So, um, to Mr Tong, you said that about the people and them that are coming on the beach and whatever. Whenever they come, they come with their pressure cooker, everything of their own. And we cannot talk to them because sometimes some people put their chairs outside. They made the chairs there, and they go and they lie down on the chair. And when you come to them to tell them, "Well, you're supposed to pay for it", you know the thing we're going to get? Rudeness. Some of them dirtying everywhere for us and leave it and go. And when you talk to them, it doesn't make sense. I mean, if you come in a place, you meet it clean, leave it clean and go. So there, Mr Tong, you don't know nothing much happening in the community with the people and them that are coming there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheila. Would you have any questions? Questions or comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, you say, okay. Um, Mr Daru, my comment is directed to you. I live in Mero and I do part-time farming, which means I traverse the Cuba Car Home Road at least once a week. As far as I can see now, the Car Home Road, if it continues as is, it is not going to reach in Car Home at all. They're not doing a very good job at all. And secondly, along with Erika, there is a bridge which we cross way down Petit Macushi. And right now, all our produce are being spoiled down there because you got to take it out from the garden, from the garden. Because we cannot cross, when the rain falls, when the rain falls, the river, the river comes down, we cannot cross the river. Transport can't cross the bridge because it's damaged by Erika. So that's a big problem for us.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for that. Okay. Yes, Roger.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, good evening.
Um, I sadly been late and I didn't get to hear the beginning of Mr Tong's speech, but I get to know that you talk about JT, a nice project of JT for Mero, where you talk about doing the Cuba Road, nice development for Mero. What I know, you spoke a bit about garbage, which is more what my concern. But I get there for Mr Douglas' pitch. And Mr Douglas, when you spoke to develop the agriculture because you need fresh produce, but in the meantime, you mentioned that you can provide gramazon and fertiliser. You one time stopped my heart. We in the nature island of Dominica, you cannot say we can provide gramazon. You should say, "Let's go organic. Let's go natural fertiliser. We can beat the region. We on the nature island. Let's promote what we are." And in the meantime, stop plastic and styrofoam. We on the shore, my daughter is fed up running after plastic bag going into the sea, and she's six-year-old. That's not a job. That's everyone's job to take care of their garbage. When are you gonna say we're gonna ban that? Just close the border to all those crap. Sorry, my French.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Thank you. You have one more that's on the side, eh? Yeah, you think it's on before we respond?
Well, good evening, everyone.
Yeah.
I think most people here know me, but I'm Matthew Ferrara. First of all, I was supposed to be in church tonight, but I don't know how I ended up being here. But thank God I'm here. I hear a lot of great things said about Mero and Mero people and the potentials in Mero. But I'm sad to say it is very, very highly underutilised. I will start with the abattoir. We know the abattoir, it's very costly to sell the chicken to the abattoir because of the cost of feeds. The answer lies right in Mero. We can produce feed and we have the resources in Mero to produce animal feed in Mero, but that is being underutilised. I like to talk to my friend, Mr Douglas. Always tell me, "The breadfruit flower dumpling going down." The breadfruit flower dumpling going down. That was since Mr Henderson was our Minister of Agriculture. Even before that, I presented to Mr Ambrose George, our Minister of Agriculture. And he promised me, "Do not give it to the Saint Vincent flower meals, but let us do it in Dominica. Dominica needs it." That never came to pass. I see Saint Vincent take it. Trinidad take over from Saint Vincent. The Far East, who was once leading, go back to Trinidad, and Trinidad coming back to Mero for information. That is, potentials has been underutilised in Mero. My friend sitting here to me know about the YAM project I was on, our local barbarium to rehabilitate it. I asked for assistance. Government said they gave me assistance. But the amount they gave me was inadequate and too late. So I find that was going to put me, almost cut my neck. I didn't accept the assistance. My son took some of their assistance, and at the end of it, it was inadequate. I let you know this. And too many times, we provide for people, but we stop short of taking them to the end product. So that's one area that I would want any government to address. If you go in with young people who needs, go to the marks and give them their needs. We have, I would challenge anybody here to go and Google Russian crazy hackers, nutcrackers. And sad to see, for ten years, we have been, we have the most advanced nutcracker right here in Mero. And because of whose hands it is in, they can get assistance to bring it out internationally. And that is one of the things that affects us in Dominica. Too many times, we are victimised because of party support. Just this last week, there are two scientists who are in Dominica on that same YAM thing. And one of my friends tell me, "Roger, what you do in the project you have", I say, "What are you doing?" He tell me, "Join them." We don't have to be same political sides for us to move Dominica forward. That is one of my concerns. We can be on different sides and move the country forward because we have resources. Unlike what our Prime Minister says, we have no resources, but human resources is resources. So that's my contribution, human resource. In a sense, let's use it to the marks and put party politics out of it.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me just respond to some of the concerns raised. Darren asked in regards to the, what is being done for the young men in terms of the fishing. In fact, we've had training done in Saint Joseph recently. Where also, some of the young men from Mero were part of the training. They undertook a training in the fisheries division. They received a fisherman card. Um, we provided some support. We have begun to provide some support to them. We also have in Layu, the boat building programme. With some of the young men have also participated in, and they have also learned the skill. So the continued support that we give to them will in fact assist them a long way in that regard. And just this week, we provided some materials for them and also a freezer so they can open their fish shop. So we are, we've begun to assist them. And in my discussion with them, I told the young men that they have to be serious about this thing. Because here it is that I'm assisting you as a member of parliament, but you also have a responsibility as well. So we can assist you, we can give you the stuff that you need, but they have to be willing to also take it from there. So we've begun the process, fully training and sure that they're properly trained first, registered fishermen, and then we can continue to assist them. My friend and also Dumaz, in regards to the Petit Macushi area, um, we will in fact send equipment up there to have it checked so we can rectify the problem for you all in the area. He had working farmers of the Cuba Car Home Road area. So we in fact have the equipment come up there to do some work for you all. Um, are questions? Yes, for Honourable Douglas?
Two issues I want to raise. First of all, the importation of styrofoam containers is classified. Previously, the customs division didn't have a differentiating classification for styrofoam and non-biodegradable containers. So right now, the Ministry of Trade is working with the customs division so that they can separate styrofoam containers from biodegradable containers. Because right now, if you leave it as is, the biodegradable containers will cost more, they're more expensive than the styrofoam. So we're trying to change the custom classification to make the biodegradable containers cheaper so that the suppliers or the users, the restaurants and other producers of food can import the biodegradable containers at a cheaper rate so that we are, we will be able to ban the styrofoam containers. On the issue of the banning of fertilisers and going organic is a process because the entire country has been using fertilisers for decades. And for the country to be classified as an organic area, there are a number of processes that you have to go through. For example, you have to ban the importation of fertiliser, completely ban the use of fertiliser for a number of years to allow the soil to read itself of the substances. But the problem with that is, when you do that and you wait for the soil to clean out, for want of a better term, then the people who produce food as a living, as a business, have to sustain themselves via their livelihoods. And so there's always the balancing effect of, if you take away that livelihood from the ordinary farmers, how will they sustain themselves in the interim while you wait for the soil to be classified as totally organic? Because it takes a number of years for all of the chemicals in the soil to be washed off. You have to actually stop using fertilisers. And if you stop using fertilisers, then the question is, how will the farmers generate revenue? So it is, it is a technical issue that we appreciate, we appreciate and we see the potential benefits to the promotion of the country if we can promote Dominica as one hundred percent nature island of the world, including the non-use and the banning of synthetic fertilisers. But at the same time, we have to balance it against the reality of persons who depend on agriculture um, for a survival or for a living. Thank you.
So just to tie in with what Honourable Douglas said. I mean, it is really a shame, and that's why he said, "When you come to Mero, when you go to Emerald Pool, when you go to any of our natural sites, the only thing that you should leave there are footprints. You shouldn't be, if you bring gab, if you bring stuff to use, you need to get rid of that stuff and take it with you. You shouldn't leave it. It's a shame that your daughter has to be running and picking up garbage bags. But I always say, "Gabbage, garbage has no hands. Garbage has no feet." So it's us, we are the ones who are putting it there, and we have to do it for ourselves first. We cannot expect the government to do all of these things. We are the ones that have to begin to do these things. Take for example, um, biodegradable material. Over forty percent of the garbage that we generate in our homes, we can put that in our yard, if we have a yard, and compost it. So guess what? As opposed to the truck having a hundred pounds of garbage, the truck would only have sixty pounds of garbage. The landfill would last longer. There'd be less wear and tear in the vehicles. But guess what? It starts with each and every one of us first. So we have to start the process. And then if persons are not doing that, hopefully, we can then begin to do, what do you call it? Enforcement. So maybe one of the things that we have to do as a community is to ensure that we have garbage receptacles along the beach so that persons can at least put the garbage in there as opposed to leaving it. So, or to have, what do you call it? Little wardens. So if persons are throwing garbage, you begin to charge them. But it starts with us before we can get through the change. But the government of Dominica is committed towards the banning of styrofoam and plastic bags. But guess what? There's a lot of work that has to be done. Many of us here, if I say we're gonna ban plastic bags, guess what's the first thing you're gonna see? Where am I gonna put my garbage? You know, so we have to have a dialogue, but the government is committed towards that. So we have to begin to prepare ourselves. We have to begin to, as I said, compost our garbage so we put less garbage out for the garbage trucks to pick up. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Minister Tong. All right. Let me say that I'm indeed happy to see so many of you this evening. We had, you have a question? Yes, small. Where's the mic? We have one more question. Yeah, we'll take the three last ones. Small and Mr. Difou. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, good night. I didn't know if we can close the Mero in the night because in the night, the all them strangers we have come in, they might pollute in our beach, you know? And plus on the tourism sector where we have our business and people busting it open. Me as if I fed up. Is that since 14 years I working and I don't get reach them old people age and I fed up already.
Okay, thank you. Small?
Yeah, good night, everybody. I'm Peter John Baptist, Senior Prison Officer. But I feel to myself that Dominica is going the right way and I believe in it. I was a hard, hard, hard worker. Now I don't worry about worker. I working with the government, right? But when people come and they talking, they talk on the mic, remember they doing more nonsense than me and you. You understand me? Or you taking it for joke? But I not taking it for joke. I'm serious. We need to take Mero because I not from Mero, I from Monarch yet.
Yes, small. Yes, small. Go ahead, go ahead, small. Go ahead, small.
Good evening, everyone. I think, I think you. It's a good thing to help the people who develop a sale too. But at the same time, it's a bad example. Because if we do so helping every, fix every road, develop a sale, it means that Tom will sell their land, not fixing their road. Harry will sell their land fixing the road and government comes and fix the road. Government come into agreement with the developer and say, well, I can fix the road for you, but you have to give me a portion of land which, which I can sell back to regain my money. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So that is not a good example, it's setting for Tom and Harry.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Now, another point about the garbage. Now, what I think government can do is empower the guys who working the beach by giving them powers that they can charge or report anybody who throwing rubbish on the beach. Now, I can remember once I was, I was walking down the road and there was some people with their, with their truck, I mean, doing their business on the beach.
Yeah.
And I tell the guys, well, when you are finished, you must go for the garbage. He tell me, well, you don't know where I come from now, I come from prison. I tell you, nothing to do with me. If you say you come from prison, first I will take the number of, number of your vehicle. And if you, if you lose, if you leave your garbage there, next day when I pass, I'll bring your vehicle where I service to bring it. And next day when I pass, I don't see no garbage. So government must take, empower the guys.
Yeah, but you're right, you're right.
Because they can be wrecking every day, every day. People just come in.
And throw the garbage.
Like I from South Wales and clean the beach. People coming from nowhere with their garbage and just leave it on the beach.
Yeah.
You have to empower them so they can report, but it must leave it in two or three weeks, right? So you all don't care doing.
But I also, I also have a fundamental problem.
Yeah.
With, with, when, 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 when the people have their activities on the Castaway side and they leave all the garbage here and the sea takes it and brings one on the other side, that happens as well. So that, that's a fundamental problem. So I think moving ahead, when people have their activities on the other side, we have to ensure that they have systems in place to dispose of their garbage for their activities properly.
Yeah, government must in our clause to curb man behavior because man is desperately wicked.
They love it, yeah, man.
And the man can say, well, they have no work to do, they're getting work to do. That's what they don't say. As she has said. They curse you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Difou, the final question, yes?
Good evening. I tend to agree with Senator Tong giving Mero all the praises and accolades that Mero deserves. But it has not been easy, the Mero Land Committee, to bring community tourism up to that stage in the community. Because remember, you have to deal with all type of individuals. Probably the people who do not even know their place in the, in the industry. They don't appreciate the value or even the money that they make from the industry. So therefore, I think we need to set standards. Whilst the beach is public, but the Mero Land Committee is the flagship that drives the community tourism in this community. And it is very difficult for us to keep it going at a certain level. Because some people feel, well, I can do what I want. It's my business, I spend my money. So I think we need the Ministry of Tourism to set standards. Whilst we can compete, but we need to compete at a certain level. This is into our product that is almost uniform. So when the customer comes, when the visitor comes, all he sees is what is acceptable. I charge $10 more, I charge 10 cents less, that does already matter. But when they come, they get a product that is uniform and acceptable because one bad experience.
Yes, too much. Thank you very much, Mr. Difou. Thank you very much. Oh, there's one last, one last one. Hello, hello, yes. The final one.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to be there tonight. Okay, it's the budget next week, so let's talk morning. Monsieur Tong, we put all our wishes in your hand. Push it. Mister Parrep, make what you have to do. Now, when I see that there is vegetable getting not sold, when I see that car of fact upside down and we have luck not to have accident in Mero on our successful Sunday, the luck has a limit. The luck has a limit. We have all of us, government included, to take care of our visitors coming in Mero. When you have a mini race of bike or mini race of muppet or mini race of scooter in the middle of the crowd of a Saturday or on the Sunday, where we are going? These guys, I know them well. They are just stopping by me. That is the only place that you can hide on the, on the, on the road and that you can put your muppet and you can be no rain. So you have all the discussion there. I'm just behind. I open my door, I understand everything. That has to stop. We have to manage our village knowing that it will not stop to grow, guys. And when I see vegetable not sold or whatever, are you talking to the people, restaurant, who are using so much? Who is Theresa? Where is Theresa? Theresa is gone, okay. The, the people who are talking to the restaurant owner have a direct market. That is called in marketing, the prime market, the prime round, okay? That is go to your neighbor, ask if he cannot buy by you instead of going Rosso to spend a bus and coming back. So I don't want to offend Rosso, but the thing is, help yourself before going Rosso. Okay, so we have farmer on the hill. Most of them are coming to me. We have fishermen in the sea. Okay, one boat, Elkin, my friend. So every Sunday when fish pod come, let's go buy by them instead of waiting for truck passing for, for all the fish from other village. Help ourselves by ourselves that Elkin can have another boat, that Tommy can go again and boom, 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 we going further, okay? But what is my real concern, guys? Is I know what is this beach potential. Don't think I'm here by hazard, there is no hazard in life. God is providing. So in that aspect, when I was swimming here and I decide, hey, this place, let me find out what it is. Okay, let's go. And from scratch, we do it. Everybody can do it. Don't think I have a treasure hunt, man. I'm making that with easy money since I arrive with easy money. No money is coming from overseas for that building. So if you have a successful seem so because we are hiring people, so we are providing and making the machine turn. Okay, I'm not going every day to the nails and to the hair. That doesn't cost me so much, okay? So I don't spend my money for that. I have a luck, it's okay. It stay great, it's okay. So, but the thing is, guys, you can all do it. And stop seeing me or whoever want to push because we have our background. I learn a lot. I'm humble. 14 years in Dominica, it's a big lesson of life. I tell you, it is giving you the wise way to handle and to pursue. Now you see me on my beach, I going straight forward. I want this jetty? No, I want a pier. I want a pier in front of with a round at the top and that we can make pier party that we are on the Yachting Association because I know what is behind. We have a scale, we have all kind of business coming from overseas who want to overnight on Christmas to make big party and with money from Martinique, Guadeloupe, Yachting Industry who want to stop over because from Rosso to Porte Smoove is too far. We can make here a regatta. We have exactly the water for that and the wind for it. So I trust in that. Hello, I don't want a jetty. I want a pier. Now, second of all, that is the thing. Second of all now, there is a no man's land in our community. And I don't talk about your field, you are on charge. I trust you and I wait for it. It's not that. We have Castaway Hotel ruined. And we are in a mess. I know the subject behind. I know who it belong. I know whatever. Guys, we have to put that on the table between you guys and especially this program on investment. And not making a fancy talala as we are making Kipinski over. No. Use it for Dominican, by Dominican and with Dominican. Use it in another way that we can develop this place as a full activity village with your pier, with your yachting service, with extending the beach until the area of the Stone of Sanjo and making something which is not a no man's land with rat, garbage and all kind of nonsense. Hello, we can clean here, but in the morning, when you jogging or when you walking all the beach long, you have a shock, you are desperate, you tell yourself shit. And even I call Emil, because I will talk with name. Even I call Emil Depor the next morning, he tell me, friend, I will clean. Okay, he clean once. But it's not him who is very responsible. It's not the party who are opening because they are managing. They are responsible people, don't accuse them. Accuse every single of us who is in Dominica, running a little private party and behaving stupid. Forgetting the garbage, not collecting our bottle, using what kind of nonsense. And we have all the garbage there and who is responsibility for? Shall we take that on charge? Yes, because it's a duty, it's the beach of Mero. When it's come on the picture, on internet, when we have an issue of, of anything happening during a championship day, as you say, less than a blink of eyes, everybody know that we had a mess on the beach. That somebody was selling whatever and that was what happened. And that kill us. Because the time that the client will come back, we lose money. So please, this no man's land, we have as government, because I know you are in, you, you more, you can have a hand on that for the moment. So we have to secure it and use it, even it's temporary for a 10 years program, whatever it is. Make people have their little lots, their, their market, whatever is the idea you want to do there, but don't let it empty. When you let a place empty, it's exactly the place where the people are peeing or giving garbage. So we are in a mess. After we have to clean. So that is my added value. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will allow Senator Tong to, Robbie, I'll allow the Minister of Tourism to speak briefly on some of the tourism matters that were raised.
First of all, I, well, sometimes I try to separate my personal thoughts with me being a minister, but I like your idea for the Mero area. Mero has a tremendous amount of opportunities. Since I've been here, since I've been coming here, I see it. Every day I come to the beach, I look around, I see it and it's just a matter of you trying something. And you can, as I said, you can start small and you can build up. Another issue we have many times, we try to do everything by ourselves. Come together as a team and work together as a team and you'd be amazed what can be done. With regards to standards, we do have standards for tourism providers. So I will ensure that our, our technical officers do some work with the Mero community. So at least they understand what are the standards for restaurants, hotels, taxi drivers, tow operators, vendors, hair breeders. So all of these things, we do have standards for that so we can provide the best possible service. So we will work together with the community and the wider Dominica to ensure that everybody is aware of what are the standards. And as persons begin to make more money, they will become members and be ready so that they discover Dominica authority. But again, so much opportunity in Mero. Let's all work together to make it a reality. Someone may have mentioned that the Prime Minister, that the Prime Minister says that we don't have resources, but I can assure you that the Prime Minister always says that our own resource is our human resource.
Thank you very much, Minister. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming to this meeting this evening because without you, this meeting could not have taken place. I want to also thank my colleague, Honorable Minister for Trade and Employment, Honorable Ian Douglas, and also the Honorable Minister for Tourism, Senator Robert Tong. Honorable Austria, who is here for us tonight, thank you very much. And each and every one of you for your contributions that you've made to the meeting and for your presence that you, you, you attended this meeting this evening. I'm very grateful for that. And also the media, DBS, Kyri FM, carried it live and also via the internet and Facebook. And to all of you who are listening at your homes, wherever you may be residing, I want to thank you for listening to this meeting this evening. So once again, we will continue to work together for the benefit of this community and together, we will continue to take Mero to places that it has never been before. Thank you and do have a wonderful night, everybody.